Call to me in order, I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, you have shown us to respect and love others in our actions and decisions. Let us follow your direction in leading our community in this time of change. Help us to realize the impact of our decisions. Show us compassion for those less fortunate. As school comes to an end, Lord, we ask for your love and safety for our children and families this summer at home and in their travels. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing difficult jobs. Lord, we trust in you and ask your blessings for all and us to thy service. Amen. Moving to agenda adjustments, I think I have two. Mr. Aldrich, I believe you wanted to move item number eight up right after the unannounced delegations, and I need to add a consult with attorney to the closed session.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, it was public hearing ordinance 2314.
Hold on, we didn't do the minutes, we didn't do the approval of the minutes.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes from the May 9, 2023 budget work session, May 15 regular and closed sessions, May 1, 2023 closed session, and portions of the closed session minutes from April 3, 2023, and April 17, 2023.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Public hearings ordinance 2314, consideration of fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Seeing that, I have a motion by Councilmember Aldrich to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving number six, unannounced delegations. I have four. First one is Amber Harley, 1239 Magnolia Street. Speak about pool safety. Yes ma'am, come right up to the mic so we can hear you.
Okay, I don't like to public speak, so I'm very nervous. Okay, so for the past two summers, my family has used the city pools regularly. I have three kids, they are nine, seven, and four. As a past lifeguard and a former competitive swimmer, I understand the importance of water safety and teaching children to swim at an early age. My first year joining the pools in Albemarle, my youngest kid was two, and I was shocked to learn about the no flotation policy. Of course, I understand limiting inflatables and devices that are not U.S. Coast Guard approved, but I could not understand why there was such a strict prohibition on life jackets. So luckily, that year, my older two kids took some lessons and they were able to enjoy the pool safely without needing the extra layer of protection. My two-year-old was a stage five clinger, so he was attached to me the whole summer, so we had no problems. We were able to enjoy. The next summer, my toddler was in full exploration mode. He wanted independence and room to explore how his body moved in the water. I was told by the lifeguards that the only flotation device allowed would be those built into the swimwear. So Amazon to the rescue. I found a swimsuit with built-in flotation and all was well. My toddler was able to safely, independently play while I was right there watching him, and we enjoyed our summer. So, but I will say, each time we went to the pool, there were conversations had with each of the lifeguards about whether or not the swimwear was allowed or breaking the rules. Ultimately, he was allowed to wear it every time we went. I've been told that this year, that floating swimsuit will not be allowed, and I'm sure my son is gonna be fine and learn to swim without it, but he is at high risk. He will be making the transition from non-swimmer to swimmer. He will get tired. He will feel more confident and be taking more risks. And of course, I'm gonna be there watching him, but there's no reason that I should be restricted from providing every possible layer of protection for my child, especially when I have two others that I'm also looking after. The reasons for prohibiting all flotation devices are not supported in any evidence-based research that I can find. The false sense of security and dependency fears, they appear to be based on feelings and not facts. The following organizations have published recommendations for pool safety. The Center for Disease Control, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Drowning Prevention Association, the National Recreation and Park Association, and Water Safety USA all recommend use of life jackets in addition to fencing, close supervision, swim lessons, and emergency preparedness, all used together as layers of protection. U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jackets should be allowed at a minimum. Ideally, life jackets should be recommended, promoted, and provided to swimmers without having to fill out special accommodation forms and wait three business days to see if your approval is going to get passed or not. Why should any child be at unnecessary risk of death because their parent is not perfect? How many of us are perfect? Of course, a life jacket does not take the place of close supervision, but why restrict such a widely recognized layer of protection? The flotation devices not permitted policy at the Albemarle pools is outdated, irresponsible, and unsafe. And I think if you've ever been to any resort with a pool or anywhere else, you will see that life jackets are promoted and available to all, and they're encouraged if you go to the YMCA. If you visit Winston-Salem, they have a wonderful splash park pool there, and they always recommend life jackets. And I will not be going to the pool this summer with my four-year-old because I'm terrified that something could happen because he's not permitted to have a life jacket. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Have you spoken with the Director of Parks?
Yes, I have, and I've gotten a lot of different answers. I was told that there already are life jackets and that they've been available, which is not the case. And I've recently been told that now there's a form that I can fill out requesting special accommodations. And that just seems, I don't know, I just feel like life jackets should be encouraged. And I've talked to multiple, I've talked to lifeguards, I've talked to the pool person who's over it, and then I've talked to the person above that as well. So, I just, anyway, yes, I have talked to them.
I would just make sure that you, if you will give your name and if you'll step over to the clerk.
Yeah.
Give your name and information so that follow-up can be made.
Okay, sure.
To the clerk right there.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Stoney Benfield, 1144 Autumn Lane, New London. He wants to speak on the bar issue.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and City Manager. My name is Stoney Benfield, and I pastor the Prospect Baptist Church in the city limits of Albemarle. I'm here tonight to represent a large group of concerned members of our community concerning the issue of allowing bars in downtown Albemarle. As Bible-believing Christians, we believe that government, according to Romans 13, is ordained by God and put in place by God to protect the affairs of the community and to make wise decisions that will keep our community safe and secure. We come tonight as a group burdened about this issue for our community, and we come with a humble spirit and in love to address this City Council members concerning this issue. First of all, we want to applaud you and thank you for allow, for your decision last month to vote against allowing bars in the downtown area. That was the most wise and right decision for the safety and the welfare of our community. Secondly, we want to encourage you tonight to stand by your previous decision on this issue for the sake of protection and security in our community. We, the people, ask you to consider several things as you discuss and vote on this issue tonight again. If your position of government is ordained by God, and it is, what the Bible says concerning this issue needs to be heard and taken in consideration before you vote again. Proverbs 20, Chapter 1 says, "Wine is a mucker; strong drink is a brawler, and whoever is led astray by it is not wise." Allowing bars, places that are designated solely for one to drink of strong drink or hard liquor, will have damaging and destructive effects in our community. The word "brawler" simply means that hard liquor or strong drink will increase domestic violence, it'll increase crime, traffic violations, and increase drug use, and will without a doubt put drunk drivers on our streets at a higher rate than we currently have right now that will endanger you, the members of our community, our kids, our grandkids, and the next generation to come. We encourage you to please consider the future of our city and the safety of our community as you discuss and vote on this. According to the Bible, it would not be wise for the City Council to change their position on the issue of allowing bars downtown. Let me give you some stats just to consider why allowing bars is an unwise decision. In 2019, 25.8% of people 18 years of age and older reported that they engaged in binge drinking. Binge drinking has the potential and is more likely to take place in a bar than in a full-service restaurant where there's food involved. A binge drinking could be defined this way, as having five or more, any type of alcoholic drink within a single event or over a period of one to two hours. That would be considered binge drinking. 52.5% of full-time college students ages 18 to 22 drank alcohol in the last month, and 33% of those college students confess to being binge drinkers. Roughly 20% of every college student meets every criterion to have an alcohol disorder. In 2021, alcohol-impaired driving fatalities accounted for almost over 14,000 deaths, or 31% of the overall driving fatalities. 696,000 students between the ages of 18 and 24 are assaulted by another student who has been drinking. 97,000 students between the ages of 18 and 24 reported experience alcohol-related sexual abuse or date rape. Date rape. An estimated of 10, 10.5% of children ages 17 and under live in a home with a parent suffering from an alcohol disorder. Statistics show that poverty is a risk factor for binge drinking and alcoholism. According to the Census Government, 14.5% of Stanley County residents live in poverty. Data shows that the parental alcohol or other drug use is a major factor for children being removed from homes on an already stressed foster care system that we currently have in this city and county already. In 2000, that percentage was 18.5%, and by 2019, the cases of removal due to alcohol or other drug use has jumped to 38.9% of the cases children had to be removed from their homes. 14.1 million adults age 18 and older have an alcohol abuse disorder. 1.3 million adults received treatment for an alcohol disorder in a specialized facility. Nearly 95,000 people die from alcohol-related causes annually, making it the third-leading preventable, preventable cause of death in the United States. Among people who die by suicide, alcohol use disorder is the second-most common mental disorder and involved in roughly one in four deaths by suicide. That would be 25%. With these known facts about the effects of alcohol and binge drinking, why would you change your position on bars in our city if you really care and want the best lifestyle for the people of our community? I have three things to leave you to think about. If you change your position on bars in Albemarle, it'd be very costly to people's lives and the safety of our community. If you change your position, many families are going to be destroyed and many children are going to be affected. And I have a question. If you change your position, does this city currently have the resources of police officers for the increased traffic violations, domestic violence, DUIs, and all that goes with it? So I guess to make a closing statement, we encourage you tonight to vote against bars in downtown Albemarle. We do that.
Thank you.
Could I pray for y'all before I turn the microphone over to somebody else? That'd be okay? Could I pray for you? Lord, I thank you for these folks that you have appointed, according to Romans 13, to be the government of this city. And God, I pray for them each individually tonight, that, Lord, they would do the right thing. God, I pray that we would represent Christ Jesus, Lord, the one that the mayor just prayed to. God, if we say we're Christians, Lord, could we make decisions that will prove our Christianity? And I pray that this group would do the right thing tonight for the glory of God. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you so much for your time.
Next is Adam Hatley, 20605 Austin Road, Oakboro.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members and to our City Manager, my name is Adam Hatley. I am a pastor here in Albemarle, West Albemarle Baptist Church. And I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening to stand and to speak. And I rise to ask again for our council to once more vote no on the request for a downtown bar. As Stoney has just clearly laid out, the biblical text that warns us against strong drink, which, when you study the scriptures, you find that even what we would consider not so strong drink is considered strong drink in the scriptures. I also want to thank Stoney for the very real statistics that he has shared. Those statistics for many of us are more than numbers on a page. We have personally experienced the devastating and the deadly effects of alcohol. And so it is my hope to explain further from personal experience and as a pastor for over 25 years, why I'm asking, why I'm asking you once again to defeat this motion. When I was growing up, my dad was a volunteer fireman at Indy Fire Department. One night in our home, the alarm went off, and my dad got up as he would often do when those alarms would go, and he left our home. He was gone for a few hours, and I will never forget when he arrived back home, he was broken, he was distraught, and he was angry. One of his very close friends and fellow firefighter sons was traveling down St. Martin Road when a drunk driver crossed the line and hit that, that young man and killed him instantly. In an instant, that family was forever changed, and so was our community, all because of the deadly effects of alcohol. Those effects have been felt in my own family and maybe even in some of yours. When I was a little boy, my grandfather, I was riding in the truck with him one day, and he said, "I want to have a talk with you, Adam," and he told me, "Never touch alcohol." He then went on to explain to me that his father-in-law had been an alcoholic, and one of his own brothers had died of alcoholism, and their families were nearly destroyed by alcoholism. Now, I can tell you tonight, I am grateful for that conversation because as a result of, as a result of it, I never took a drink. I'm not saying that bragging, but as a testament of thanksgiving to God for his protection in my life. Now, I will tell you that while I didn't drink, I did have friends over the years who did. And I can tell you that I have never met a person who did not drink and also drive, and I mean never. Beyond that, over the years, I have ministered to many families who have been on the receiving end of the destructive effects of alcohol, spouses who have had to raise children in homes of a drunk, families who couldn't pay their bills, marriages that could not survive, and lives and communities that were forever changed by alcohol, including our own over 20 years ago. I have never once seen the positive effects of alcohol. I've never seen someone deliver to alcohol, but I have seen God deliver many from it. And so quite honestly, I really do not understand with all the other challenges that our city is facing with homelessness and drugs and so many other things, while we need to add another outlet that will further stretch our police, our hospitals, and our tax-paying citizens. Now, I know many people think that alcohol use and abuse is dependent on the individual, that they have to be responsible. As the beer commercials love to tell us, we need to drink responsibly. Well, I can tell you that when people in leadership have an opportunity to protect the citizens and do the right thing morally, which is always more important than doing the right thing financially, then they must do it. So I want to ask you to do the same for this community for what my, to what my grandmother, excuse me, my grandfather asked me to do so many years ago. Say no to alcohol. Say no to this motion. Thank you.
Danny Laws, 2218 Woodhurst Lane, Albemarle.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager. I've been a resident of Albemarle for 29 years. I have raised three children. I have eight grandchildren, two of which live in Stanley County, those children. I have five grandchildren who currently live here in Stanley County. I've served three Baptist churches here in Stanley County, one being South Albemarle Baptist Church for 14 years. I understand fully the pressures of leadership as well as the responsibility of leadership, whether in the family, the church, or civil government. I also understand the consequences of alcohol, drugs, and gambling due to the horrors that all three have brought to my immediate family and the people that I have pastored for the past 34 years. In my years of tenure at South Albemarle Baptist Church, I can't even have a study at my office at church because of the interruptions of people leaving Rock Creek Park wanting something else to help their addiction, wanting money or something to continue that habit that they have. I will say my son is a dedicated husband, a father, and a police officer for this city. I've watched him put his life on the line every day for several years for this city and protect my family and your family as well. His job as well as other public servants are much more strenuous. I believe with all my heart because there's people overdosing on opiates every day. Every single day, I see the Narco car running here, running there on a constant basis, rescuing somebody. Those leaving bars and establishments, going to, in a drunkard stupor, getting on our highways, headed to their homes, that's no good for no one. I don't want to be on the road, and what about you? I personally watch some of my immediate family ruin their lives and their families because of their use of alcohol, drugs, and gambling. I have a brother-in-law who was a star athlete, same age as I am, who got called up, had a college scholarship, phenomenal baseball player, started drinking, hanging out with a wrong crowd. He ended up dying with cirrhosis of the liver in a rest home facility at 50 years of age due to alcohol. He woke up drinking, went to bed drinking, and it all started with one drink. He never intended for that to happen. It started with one simple experiment of alcohol. Nobody knows who has that genetic for that to take place. Let me go on to further to say, I can assure you one fact, every single one of my relatives who visit the bar didn't go there for chips and peanuts. They went to drink, drink, and drink. Some drank more. Why? Because alcohol is a proven stimulant that affects the thought pattern, causing an individual to make irrational decisions. You've heard both of these men, the statistics they gave, it's obvious. My daughter works in the nursing field, she's a teacher at Pfeiffer, and I've got others that have dealt with this. It's traumatic. It causes lives to be ruined. Why in the world we want more of that in our community? I don't understand. No one seems to mention one fact, though, very briefly it was mentioned, the children that are affected by those who visit these bars and intoxicate themselves. Each week, each weekend, backpacks with food are sent home by volunteering churches and individuals of many of our churches. Many of children would have nothing to eat if churches and schools didn't do that. Why? More times than none, you can be assured it's because of parents' regular visit to a bar or a business who supplies alcohol. I respectfully ask you as elected officials to stand for what's right and say no to allow more opportunity for alcohol abuse in this community of Albemarle, North Carolina. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number eight, unfinished business, discussion of allowing bars in the Central Business District, General Highway Business District, and Shopping Center District. I'll give you a little bit of history, just so everybody knows how this came about. A little over 20 years ago, there was a referendum to allow beer and wine, ABC stores, and liquor by the drink. That passed. One of the stipulations in that referendum was there would be no private clubs or bars in the city of Albemarle. A few years ago, the state legislature changed that law, which said we could no longer restrict those bars and private clubs. We had to allow them, but it did not tell us how we had to do our zoning. So, again, a few months ago, the city decided to make our definitions in compliance with the state. And so that changed the way the wording was on the law. So a local businessman came forward and asked for a text amendment to allow for bars in the Central Business District, General Highway Business District, and Shopping Center District. That brought us to a public hearing last month. It had begun through the entire process. It first went to the planning board. Planning board recommended it to council. Council held a public hearing last month, and it failed by a four to three vote. We are here tonight because another, a council member has asked us to have additional discussion on that issue, and the only ones that can ask for additional discussion on that issue would have been the ones that voted no, that were in majority. So we're here to discuss that, and if any vote takes place tonight, it will only be to set a public hearing for the, for the future. There will not be yes or no tonight. It'd just be whether we have another public hearing tonight. I'll open it now for discussion, council.
I just, I want a clarification. I think the very last thing that I remember hearing on May 15 was the comment that if we approve this text amendment, that we'll have a bar on every corner. And it's my understanding that what was before us last meeting was the text amendment change and allowing for us to determine if it was going to be a special use permit, meaning that we counsel before any, any definition of a bar or any bar as defined by the ordinance, it would come to counsel individually. And I want to make sure that was the decision, that was the issue that I had, because I wanted to make sure that fellow council members realized that it was not just up and have a bar everywhere. It would have to meet certain credentials, and it would be, the last word would come individually from council.
Yes, council would have to, would receive a petition for a special conditions permit. It would then come to council and be heard individually, and council could determine at that time what conditions they would want to put on it, if that's how you, they chose to proceed at that point.
So if that's, if that's approved, which I don't mind, the folks here probably know the way the, the vote went last time. I voted against it last time. I'll vote against it again tonight. My biggest issue is, how do you pick and choose that? How do you, how do you, what precedence are you going to set if I want to come down here and open a bar, and this next person wants to come and open a bar? How do you approve one and not approve them all?
And that's what, that's the reason I brought it back up, because I wanted the clarification of it. I did not see in anything that was given to us what the stipulations were or anything else. If it had to be so many feet or so many, so much distance from another one, there just were a lot of things that were left unclear. And I thought that I needed more information on it, and when the vote came up last time, that is, I mean, that's the reason I voted the way I did. Now, I will also say that I think tonight's information, we had a public hearing, May 15. There was no one here. No one, I mean, we had, I think, one person to speak, two people to speak in favor of it, and I don't remember, without looking back at my notes, I don't think there was anybody here to speak against it. None.
That's correct. The proposal, Ms. Ms. Hall, would allow bars without any distance in the Central The proposal, Ms. Hall, would allow bars without any distance in the Central Business District, but in the General Highway Business District and Shopping Center District, there was a $1,500, $1,500 foot limit. You couldn't go closer to another one for 1,500 foot away.
But that's not downtown, that would be.
Downtown, that would be.
So what type things could we incorporate into Central Business District from a special use permit?
That would be totally up to council, what council would want, would wish to do.
I'll be honest with you. I'm very disappointed that we're really doing this. In order to affect what may happen, we would first of all have to vote to rescind the action that was taken to disapprove the proposal. Then, once we rescinded that, then it would be open for discussion or action for whatever we wanted. It may have happened before, but I can never remember an action taken by city council to be rescinded at the next meeting. There may have been, may have happened, and you may know some, but I've never known that. And it pains me to think of the possibility that such would happen with something like alcohol. I've been here 40 some years. I was here when we were dry. I was here when the thing that the mayor mentioned passed. It was a referendum that passed. I've seen alcohol go in restaurants. I've seen ABC stores. I've seen that segue, and we now have breweries where you don't have to have food. You can drink all the beer you want. We don't have food. We now have social district. We've seen this evolve straight through. We have social district where you can take your drink and walk through town with it. I don't know if you know it or not, but the legislature is considering legalizing marijuana. That is being considered by the legislature right now. We talk about the kinds of things that our ministers have talked about. We have, just across our border, a huge gambling casino that has been approved by the legislature. If we have totally open bars, if we have legalized marijuana, if we have gambling, the only thing left is prostitution. And where on earth are we going with all of this? It pains me to even think about it, folks.
Further discussion?
I will say, during the last meeting, when we took that vote, I think we was listening to a business owner, and he was talking, I'm taking a position of business sustainability. We put a lot of investment in downtown. We established the social district. We in the process of doing the alleyway project. And then, we get a request from one business owner to allow an option at his facility that he's not currently able to provide simply because he don't have the footprint to add the food addition. But, I will say this in his defense. I've never rode through downtown, especially on a weekend, and hadn't seen a food truck or something of that nature. Now, we encourage people as a council to come downtown. Personally, I think a lot of the people that come downtown, come here, we've got very few menu options for restaurants. We got Five Points, you know, off the squares currently in a transition, but some of them come downtown to see what food truck options are here, you know. Now, he made a statement. He made a statement that he's losing a lot of business to some other towns simply because he don't have that option to provide liquor for his patrons that desire to drink liquor instead of craft beer. Now, yes, yes, praise the Lord. I do praise him daily. But one thing I will add, whenever we as a council start talking about business, increasing foot traffic in downtown, let's reflect back on last August, August 13th. Let's go back to October 8th. Bait and Brewz, single-handedly as a business, brought more people to the streets of downtown Albemarle for a festival than any festival that the city of Albemarle ever sponsored could generate traffic for. Now, I respect him as a business owner simply because I don't think that him personally would sell liquor or anybody to anybody that's at his business intoxicated to a certain extent. Now, now, whether or not somebody just continues to drink and get drunk, in a drunken spirit, you can't fit stupid, you know, you can't do that, you know. But nothing in our ordinances right now would prevent somebody from going to Five Points, going to the bar, drinking liquor all day, and not eat a drop of food. That's the only thing that I think from my perspective that this business owner is asking. Now, if he up and leaves downtown Albemarle, it's not only going to affect his business. I think Hilltop Seafood, I think they benefit from Bait and Brewz. Bait and Brewz benefit from Hilltop. You know, I think if we lose those two businesses, we going backwards as a city, you know. I'll just say that.
Further comments?
I would look to the attorney. The way that something would have to be, would be then like I requested, was just a motion to reconsider, not necessarily rescind. But if we did anything tonight, it would have to go back to a motion to reconsider, and we go through the process of a public hearing again. Is that right, Britt?
Correct. So if council chooses to do anything tonight to bring this back anew, it would mainly be tonight to adopt a motion to set a public hearing for future reconsideration of the text amendment, and council can choose what future date that is.
What, future what?
Future date, whatever future council meeting you decide.
Further comments? I'll open the floor for a motion. If anyone wants to make one, that will have to be either Councilmember Aldridge, Councilmember Bramlett, Councilmember Hall, or Councilmember Hunt, since you were the majority last vote.
And if there's no motion, Your Honor, it stands as approved.
Last call. Okay? No motion? Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you coming here and filling our room, because we usually are by ourselves. We love seeing people come. I'll give it just a minute, since a few people are leaving, then we'll move on.
So where are you going back on the agenda?
Reports. Oh, yeah. Compared to the others.
So are we gonna, we're gonna go back to budget, though?
Yeah, I gotta pass no motion on that.
Well, but we, at that time, we can have discussion on it, because, I mean, there's not, the public hearing was for the public.
Just drop 25.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've got some.
All that body heat, just drop 25.
I think Mr. Bramlett does, too.
Moving back to item number seven, administrative reports. Mister Calendar is in your agenda. If anyone has any questions or comments. Moving back to item number four, I would entertain, Mr. Ferris, can we close the doors, please? It's sort of hard to hear.
It's very hard to hear.
Navy, would you close the doors, please? We don't mean to shut them out, but it's a little difficult to hear. Moving back to item number five, public hearing, ordinance 2314, consideration of fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember, was that Whitley? Further discussion?
I have some questions, but I will yield to my council member to the right if you want to start.
I don't care. I just had a couple of questions, and more may come up as we get into discussion. Where's the fund balance in this thing? I couldn't find it.
Did you get the paper that Mr. Ferris sent us email?
I tried to find it in the budget.
Are you talking about our current reserve amounts?
Yeah, I know we're required to have a certain pool of money set aside, and I couldn't, I couldn't find where that wasn't, I couldn't find where anything was budgeted for it.
Right. The fund balance is our cash.
Is that $6,250,000?
I don't have the budget. The fund balance overall, city general fund, fund balance figures in front of me, I think were, I've got them handy.
I know you've got enterprise funds that have to have their own budget, but I'm talking about in general.
Right. As part of our budget, we wouldn't, that's our revenue expenditure. So unless we're planning to use some of it as revenue or expending some of it, the fund balance, what we have in the bank, doesn't show up as part of our budget because we're not planning to use it. So it remains elsewhere. I'm just trying to see if I've got something that we provided on the last budget session.
That's normally an indicator of the economic health of a community.
Oh, right, right. Our fund balance, let me see if I've got it handy for this.
I think I saw that figure was 600, 250,000, about 6,250,000.
That's, I mean, that's generally in the right ballpark of our undesignated, unappropriated fund balance. Now, I think in the general fund, it's a little bit more when you place, add some of the restricted fund balance figures in there, but that means they've been designated for potential, for special uses, or can only go for special uses. So our undesignated unrestricted is about the figure that you had mentioned. Again, it wouldn't show up in the budget, but that figure can be used for any general fund purpose. But you're in the right ballpark. It's 6 billion. I think at the last budget work session, we were, for the current fiscal year, at about 33, 34% of our general fund budget was the unrestricted fund balance. So I would anticipate that when we close out this current fiscal year, which ends in June, on June 30th, we will add to that. But your recollection of what that figure is, is in the right ballpark.
So I have a couple. After our meeting on May the 9th, and we had the meeting in this room, and Mr. Ferris presented the budget, and then we met on the 15th, and he talked a little bit, I don't know if we talked a little bit more about that, but shortly after that, we got an email from Mr. Ferris that said, "If you have questions about any budget things, please send it to us." Well, we've had three weeks since we've, we've had a month to look at this, and I've sent several things to Mr. Ferris. And we've gotten some information back, as well as I think each of you were copied on it. And one of those things was that I saw in the budget that we were going to do another study with IT. And I just remembered, we did an IT study several years ago. And it was my recollection that we did not implement any of those things years ago. So I'm going to go through some things, and if you have either one of these items that was given to us at that budget overview meeting on May 9th, I'm going to just bring up some of those things, because that's of interest. To begin with, I'm going to go back to this, and this was what he gave us the night we did the presentation. And again, this presentation was just to us. It was not to the community because it was not on camera. This was just to us as members of council, and I believe most of staff was here. First of all, if I remember correctly, and I stand to be corrected, we are using a couple hundred thousand dollars from fund balance to budget, to balance this budget. I think to be specifically, we're using $282,000 of fund balance to balance this budget, which concerns me to get into fund balance at the very beginning of a budget cycle, using fund balance to budget something when we know during the year they may be moved. And Mr. Ferris, I'm on page about six or eight. So that concerns me from the get-go, particularly since we have gotten 5.1, nearly 5.2 million dollars of ARPA money to use for special kinds of things. And I go back to that, and I don't like to harp on that, but that 5 point, almost 5.2 million dollars for ARPA is that holy manna that we will never see again. And again, I continue to say, we need to be using that for special projects that we don't need to be using, that shouldn't, that shouldn't, we shouldn't be using those for projects that ought to be coming out of the general fund. I see that part of that $80,000 from fund balance going into the general fund as revenue will be expended to a master plan for parks and recreation. I love that idea of doing a master plan for parks and recreation, but we are in some immediate needs right now that don't need to be planned. We have some real immediate needs, and I'm going off my script when I say what I'm about to say, but in the last week, I dare not say that we've had 2,000 people in our parks in the last week.
At least.
Okay?
At least.
Some of those are Albemarle residents, some are Stanley County residents. Many of them are residents from outside this county. We had, I don't know how many people, I'm afraid to guess how many we had out at City Lake on Friday night. So we've got, if we're going to bring people into town, we talk about downtown development and want downtown to look great, and we're trying to do our best there. We're sitting on gyms within our park, and they're just hanging there. I had folks come up to me on, and this is nothing derogatory against staff or anybody else, it's just folks who know that I am on council, who came up to me at both of those parks this week, both at Don Montgomery and at City Lake, and said, "We need to do something about the restroom facilities," and we've heard this from Lisa for years. The same goes for down at Rock Creek, the same goes for Chuck Morehead. We don't need that to be in a study, guys. We know that needs to happen. And if we're bringing people in all the time, we don't need to be doing that study. We need to go down, and we need to put some of that into action. That became very clear to me. We are back, I'm still back onto this sheet right here, this information. We do know that we are in the last year of our waste management. Am I correct on that, Michael?
That's correct.
Okay. And within that...
Let me clarify. The upcoming budget year will be the last.
Right, that, right. This year, '24, will be the last year with our upcoming contract with waste management. And within the boundaries of that original contract, it was, we charged our residents an additional amount of money every year within that contract, and that is within this as We are having a water and a sewer increase. Granted, ours, when you look at it compared to other people across the state of North Carolina on the dashboard, for local municipalities, we, it's very reasonable what we're paying here, even within the county, what other towns are paying. It is very reasonable to what we're paying, however, that we are having an increase. Increase that has me most concerned is the increase of the vehicle tax. And the vehicle tax, when I asked that question to Mr. Ferris, he gave me, he gave me, and I think he answered to everyone, that there are probably over 200 towns, cities, or villages in North Carolina that charge that vehicle tax, and we are able to do that. What some folks may remember is in 2008 to 2010, the General Assembly took away any opportunity for the cities and towns... for the cities and towns to have any type of taxation on anything. So this was the way that they were able to, we were able to get some of that money back. It started out $5 a car, and then it went to $10 a car, and now the proposal is that it goes to $15 a car. People don't even realize that's out there. They don't realize that that's a tax because when they get their registration, they go get their car inspected, they go get their tag, they don't ask about that because what they want is their tag. So they don't even care. But that is, that is an amount of money that we're, that is a tax that we are requesting that our citizens pay if they own a vehicle, if they own a vehicle. I go back to that particular amount of money and say, that is now $15 per vehicle that folks own. Mr. Ferris went on to clarify in an email that we all got, I do believe that, you know, that what we get is still not what we put into paving our roads. I will continue to say that this budget, we're still not paving our roads. That, the study, and I go, I go back to that study, whether it's the study of parks or whatever study, the study that we had done years ago said, we are going to have to put 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars a year into roads to keep them at, at the rate that they are right now. And guys, they're just getting worse. So I go back to, I go back to that, $15 tax per car, that's how we're raising funds this year in addition to the general fund. Now I will ask you if you've got this, and maybe I should have said to you, please bring it, but I didn't. We go back to the budget overview, and I've got just a couple of comments there or questions there. And I should have asked this, Mr. Ferris, you may have given it to me. Do you know or can you tell me what that $15 per vehicle, what, what that will yield? I can't remember if that was.
Sure.
Okay. If you can be looking up that, I'd appreciate it. And while you're looking that up, if you can tell me where in the budget, the star resources is in the budget and how much is budgeted this year? Because I couldn't find that.
It said multiple funds in training.
Multiple funds. Do you know what the total was this year?
Probably about $40,000.
Like it was this past year?
That's correct.
Okay.
So motor vehicle tax, 224,025 is the budgeted figure.
224, 25?
Yes.
So when you think about it, that's not a lot of money, particularly when we need to be putting one, and is that total? That's the total at 15?
That's from that fee, yes.
For the $15 per?
Yes.
And this year, and I think there's, you know, I can't remember the exact, we are putting more than that into paving. However, we need, if we're charging that, that, that needs to go straight to paving. It doesn't, in my opinion, need to go to general fund, though general, though the general fund is where paving is coming out of.
That's what it's going to.
I'm sorry, you were saying, what, what did you say, Mike?
So this is what it's going to.
And yeah, but it, yeah, if we go back, let's, let's address the streets for a moment. A minute or so ago, Ross stood up and took us through the street process for this coming year. Everything had an increase. Everything had an increase. I don't care if you go to the grocery store or you go to the filling station, what we're paying today is far greater than what we have paid in years past. So therefore, we are limited in what we can do to increase our intake of cash without going up on the tax base at 61 cents per hundred. Obviously, it, that would be extremely difficult to do, even in the best of times, much less the worst of times. So I think anything that we can do, and I think the people would certainly appreciate that we're looking at alternatives that don't hit the pocketbook that hard, but we still have to be in business to, to give you the opportunity to have good roads to travel on. And you can go over to some streets and it's, they're not very big, but to do a total reclamation, if Ross was here, they're almost a million dollars now. And that, that's just totally obscene with what we have to pay to keep up these roads. So I think anything that we could do to help cut that down reasonably is, is something that we, we certainly need, in my opinion, only needs to do, and I'm glad to see that in there.
I'm going to go on through, just so that, again, so folks up here understand, because we, you know, we were just handed this to look through. In the past years, we've always, in past years, we've looked at what departments have asked for, and I know the reason we're not doing it is because the administration decided they wanted to do it a different way, which is fine. However, I contend that I still would like to hear what the requests have been. There is an, there is a line on the general fund expenditures, which is, which is a note, if you will, for not just expenditures, but for revenue, and that the count, that we receive $12,000 for the county because they provide that to volunteer fire departments, so that volunteer fire departments can be manned at certain times. And I guess we're going to try to use some of that money to do some part-time for inspections. I don't know, but that's a revenue that at least is mentioned.
That's the revenue that's, that we've gotten since they implemented for the volunteer.
Right. And that's been over 10 years, eh, eight years probably. Lastly, on this particular handout, we're going back to parks. And again, I'll mention it now because it's an immediate need. I was at those parks last week. Benton was there a night. I saw him, I saw, I know Mr. Bramble, you were there. I didn't see you, but I heard you were at one of them. I know that Chris was there one night. Anyway, when people come up to me and say, we need, you've got two restrooms here.
Yeah.
Okay. You've got two in the guys and two in the females. That's not enough. Friday night at City Lake, they said, if nothing else, get us some blue, blue porta potties out here or something. But guys, we are bringing people from everywhere, and we don't need to study that. We just need to make sure that that gets done. So if what we need to do is to rearrange some money to do some of that immediately, guys, we knew in March, we knew in March, when we made it public that the Wampus Cats were going to be here in May, what we were going to be expected to do down there. And it's almost, it was almost embarrassing because, not that it's bad, and I, and our guys and our whole staff at Parks and Rec has been working very hard to bring things up, but we need to put some money into some of that so that we can be proud of it when we have folks from out of town and out of state coming. We need some lights. We need some lights at that ballpark.
Don Montgomery.
Well, we need some lights at that park for whenever quarter till nine gets there or nine o'clock gets there and they're playing baseball out there. We need some better lights and some folks, some ball folks told me that. That's not me, that's some ball folks. We need some better lights at City Lake in the circle where the, where the food trucks are. We need some better, and they do, they do a great job bringing those big trucks with the big spotlights into City Lake at night. But guys, we're bringing people. This has gotten a lot larger. The City Lake Food Truck Fridays has gotten a lot larger than I think anyone ever envisioned when it was a dream during COVID-1. We weren't prepared for it, but it's a great event. And I think we've got to put our money where our mouth is. We don't need to do another, we need to put some money into fixing up some of those places. On my note.
Probably need some nets.
Some what?
I spoke with the Wampus Cats owner, because that's one of the things he had talked about, and he told me he was investigating it right now, because we definitely need nets down both of the foul lines.
I'll tell you, that first, that first base foul line, there were a lot hit across the street this past week. And I guess those were my comments. While I'm looking back through, if anybody else has got comments, I need to make.
I want to add one thing to what, to what you were talking about. I sat at the last game, I sat beside some people from Hickory. A couple and their daughter were there. I think they had an interest in one of our players somehow, but they were, they were sort of complaining that they had to go back to Hickory that night because the cheapest room they could find in Albemarle was $125. And that's six hotels. We've got a lot of history here from somewhere.
We need another hotel, at least one right now.
We do.
Well, we sold one some land.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, I'll also add to what Mayor Protem Hall said. I was too down at the food truck Friday on Friday night and had several people comment about the, the lack of facilities down there. And, you know, this is not just an Albemarle and Stanley County thing. This is a, this is a regional and multi-state deal. I mean, there's folks there from South Carolina, from all across North Carolina, and to, to the, to Mayor Protem's Hall, Hall's comment also about the lights at Don Montgomery. You know, what, what an unbelievable turnout Memorial Day night. That was, that was a great deal, but there were several, there are several lights down there. And to the point, if we're going to, if we're going to be bringing folks in from all around, we need to make sure that we're standing tall and looking good, smelling good.
Let me add one thing to that. We, we sometimes undersell ourselves. We say we've got 16,000 people, but the population of people who live in 28001 is 26,000 people. So we're not a 16,000 person city. We're a 26,000 sized city. And that, that, that's, that's no small, no, no small potato. I want to ask one other question. And our total budget is $81 million, or thereabouts, total. Is there any way at $81 million that we could fund $20,000 to fund some of our arts groups? I'd like to see us give $5,000 to the community.
Talking to your mic. I can't hear you.
I'm, I'm saying out of $81 million, I'm just asking, is there any way we could fund $20,000 for the arts communities that provide so much to the, to the kind of community that we are? I'd like to see us give $5,000 each to community concerts, the community band, Uwari players, and the talent company for what they do. I know we have an auditorium that is, that has enhanced our, our arts community a great deal. And I just, I, I just, I'd like to see us do more than that. I don't know, can I make a motion to add to the budget or, or what? Can we do that? Is that a feasible thing?
It's totally up to council. If council wishes to add something to the budget, you got to tell us where the money is going to come from. Are you going to take it from something else? You're going to take it from fund balance?
Well, I was thinking if we had, if we, that's where I was asking about fund balance. Because I, I thought if we've got $6,250,000, we could take $20,000, that'd lead to $6,230,000.
If we're talking about, and of course, anything related to the arts would not be funded by a majority of the budget. It would just be a general fund activity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Electric, water, sewer.
I know where you're going. I know where you're going.
So, so within that, I believe the general fund is somewhere in the neighborhood of 20, 21 million dollars. If we're talking about adding $20,000 to the budget of that size, that, that is doable. If we start adding 20, 20, 40.
No, I do understand. I do understand.
You have to find something else to take out, but we have that sort of flexibility.
That tells them we feel that that's important.
What do we currently fund the Arts Council?
I believe it's.
$1,500, I think. I was just trying to look for that because I just read it a bit ago.
Give me a moment.
It's a very small amount, if it's, even if it's in there.
It's, it's, there is. I just saw it this afternoon again.
Arts Council, $1,500.
Yeah. And that's the Arts Council. And what people don't realize is the Arts Council is just the Arts Council. It doesn't have, and you know, along that same idea, Chris, I have been suggesting for a long time that we have one center portal of not, of arts and activities in this county, because right now we've got a lot going on, and if people don't think there's a lot going on, they just need to try to hit everything over a weekend. But we don't have, I mean, even though the Visitors Bureau is supposed to be doing it and does a, does a job with it, people don't go down and, and put on there what they need to. So I mean, there's just a lot of activities that go on.
Can I make a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir. You can.
Well, we have a motion on the table in a second to approve the budget.
This is an amendment.
It would be, he would be amending.
This is an amendment.
And Ms. Bertsch, let me ask you. Are any of these considered, have nonprofit status?
I think all of them do.
All of them do.
Ms. Bertsch, does that run afoul of the law about giving to nonprofit that we ran into previously?
So what I would recommend, if there's a desire to give to organizations that are, I guess, furthering the purpose of the arts, doing something similar that we did with the Downtown Catalyst Grant, creating a committee and then that committee kind of decide where the money goes. I don't know off the top of my head what the regulations are on charitable giving for municipalities, but it would be wise to kind of open it up a little more than.
Than just.
Picking the, the exact recipients.
I, I didn't pick.
She said that rather than do, just to name it, do it like we do the Catalyst Grant, put a amount of money in there, establish a committee, and let them recommend to us where it goes to.
Okay. Okay. I don't mind that.
It always, you know, sounds like a good idea, but that's, you know, I think that's another committee, it's another group, it's another. It's all doable.
Since we designate the Arts Council, can't we designate these four groups?
That's where, that's where I was headed.
And, and the Arts Council is a nonprofit, okay? So if we're doing it to.
And I would, I would say, all of these that are nonprofits.
Let's, let's do this. If you want to make the motion to amend and add that, do that, but let's also put it that we will allow Ms. Bertsch to research legality.
Of course.
Before any pay, anything's paid.
Of course.
And can we specify the groups just one more time?
Okay. I'm going to make, I move an amendment to the budget motion that we allocate $5,000 each to the community organizations, community concerts, the community band, Uwari players, and the talent company. With the proviso that they need to be a fully registered nonprofit organization. Is that 501(c)(3)?
That meets the legality.
Meets the legality. Okay.
My only concern there is, and I, and I like what City Attorney had just said, you know, I'm afraid that we may be overlooking some organization out there that might touch base on cultural arts, you know, that we not, sitting around this council chambers that we not familiar with, you know. I, me personally, I would be in favor of allocating its number of dollars and do it similar to we, how we do the Catalyst Grant Fund, to make sure that, let them apply on a project basis. If they need certain amount of dollars, let them apply, you know, because I'm, I'm afraid that we're going to exclude somebody and then we're going to be in hot water.
I know we're going to exclude somebody. I know we've got more than that.
That's why I don't like earmarking certain organizations. It's almost like, it almost appeared to the general public as though we cherry picking who we want to give money to.
I, I think, I think we are.
Well, yeah, that's not how we operate.
These are the most public, in the public eye of any that I know of.
To song.
Well, I, I support giving to the arts. I give to each of those because I mean, I support that. I want us to make sure that we do it legally because I think that we've, because there's that thin line.
That's in the motion.
I have a motion on the floor. You heard the motion from?
Question.
Councilmember Bramble.
Question. If we are amending the budget right now for the arts, what about what Council, Mayor Protem Hall said about taking the money out for the study for the parks? Are we including that in the motion or we going to come back and do a separate motion on that?
I've only heard one motion at this point.
I'm just.
Because it makes perfectly good sense. We know we don't have money to do a study for general parks. We could take that money and apply it for things that we know off the top of our head from a common sense standpoint that got to be done.
But if we don't do the, the study for the park, are you talking about the plan, right? That's what we're studying?
It's a Parks and Recreation Director has recommended that we update our Parks and Recreation Master Plans since it's got some age on it and we've picked up a lot of new activities and times have changed.
If we don't do that, do we still qualify for Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grants? I know that's, we had in the past when it got so old, we had to update it.
I, I don't know. Yes, usually those grants require you to have some sort of master plan like that, which we do. Now, what I can't answer is how they would look at ours given the age. Is it, you know, if we're still working off it somewhat, is that going to be acceptable? Or are they just going to? Or are they just going to advise us that we wouldn't be eligible because of age? That's something I cannot answer.
What I, what I would recommend if, if council is accept, receptive to this, don't make any motion on changing that tonight, but if you want to change that after you speak with Lisa, you can always do a budget amendment to move it if needed, or Mr. Ferris has the authority to do so much in line item adjustments. If council has a priority they want to do, let's bring it back to Lisa and get her input on this plan. Or we're gonna need this plan to continue to apply for grants.
So what I'm hearing is leave the money there, uh, and whether it goes to get the answer on whether the master plan would be required to be updated to be eligible for other parks grants. And then at that time, council will decide whether it does stay as a master plan, uh, fund or it then changes to become, uh, a fund to support some other parks and recreation.
Let the Parks and Director address us. We don't have her here tonight, let's let her address us on that.
And you know, with, with what concerns we've got up here, I am, I'll ask that in a minute. So we're talking about parks right now. What is the status? If I remember correctly, I don't think we got our money from the county. Is there?
We were not eligible this year because we still had an open grant.
Right, so we got, we got our first grant. We did not get the second grant.
I noticed that, I noticed that.
And that goes back to the issue of when, uh, Councilmember Bramble's referencing the area we serve, not having support for County Parks and Recreation Services and support for other activities. Because what happens is the municipalities that make up about half of the population of this county, uh, municipal taxpayers end up supporting or providing for about one hundred percent of parks and recreation activities. Because, you know, we don't charge to come into the parks, we don't charge for the events, so.
I'm very proud of that.
Yeah. It, it, well, I am too, but it's just becomes, you know, it's, it's hard to fund everything at a level, um, and for everybody that we would like to on an ideal basis.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
And is that, what is that motion for?
Mr. Bramble's motion for the nonprofit, twenty thousand dollars to the nonprofits he listed.
I'll second it because I support it. However, I don't, I think there's too many openings, too many unanswered questions. And I would then la, um, if, I'll second it, just have it on there. And then, um, if there's other discussion, I would entertain another motion.
Just with clarification on how it's to be distributed, not necessarily who, but the process.
At this point, he's already made the motion, how it would be distributed. So it's gonna have to be changed and he's gonna have to amend his motion. I have a motion in a second, do I have any further discussion?
Just to clarify, sorry, but, geez, Council, so Councilmember Bramble's motion is to give money to these five, uh, four organizations, five thousand dollars apiece. But was that motion to amend the original motion to approve the budget?
That's what he said.
Okay.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Point of clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
So are we finished with the original discussion on the budget?
No, it goes back to the budget.
Back to, okay, back to the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, just point of clear, I wanted to make sure everybody understood what we were talking about here.
To amend the original.
Okay, all in favor again, say aye.
Aye.
I have two, Bramble and Hall. All imposed?
No, no.
All right, bells four, three. We're open for further discussion. If not, I'll go back to the original motion to approve the ordinance.
And I will, uh, uh, offer a substitute motion that because there, we've, these kinds of things have come up tonight, that we table the, dis- table the, um, vote on the agenda until nineteen June.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to table the vote on the ordinance twenty-three fourteen until June nineteenth. The second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion.
When, when does new budget take effect?
It has to be adopted by June thirtieth.
Okay, 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 all right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Five, two. That's correct, yes. Moving to number nine, the consent agenda. A, consider adoption of ARPA policy resolutions. B, consider road closure for Stanley County History Center Big Truck Day. C, ordinance twenty-three fifteen to establish a project budget Stormwater Little Long Creek Watershed Study Number One, which is through Department of DEQ. Number D, ordinance twenty-three sixteen to establish the project budget for the Stormwater Little Long Creek Watershed Study Number Two, which is from Golden Leaf. E, ordinance twenty-three seventeen to establish a project budget for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation and conversion project. F, ordinance twenty-three eighteen to establish a project budget for the Albemarle Business Center Site Ready Project, and again, Golden Leaf Grant. G, ordinance twenty-three nineteen to establish a project budget for the purchase of radios. H, ordinance twenty-three twenty, establish ARPA Grant Project Fund. I, ordinance twenty-three twenty-one, amending the operating budget for ARPA project appropriation. Council, these have previously been approved by you. This is to do the budget amendments to come in compliance with our budget requirements.
And that's current budget to end June thirtieth.
That's correct.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble, second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries, seven, one, six, one. Uh, moving on to ten, new business resolution twenty-three twelve to join and incorporate the Yadkin PD Water Management Group. Council, have any questions, Mr. Ferris or?
I do.
Okay, I do not see Mr. Boles. Mr. Ferris, I guess it's on you.
I got, uh, I, I read this thing very carefully, uh, and.
Yep, here he comes, yay.
Perfect time.
Boy, that's good.
Perfect time.
I believe he was outside, it wasn't, uh.
Good afternoon, Council. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So, uh, I, I'm just gonna keep this very brief. I, I put in a lot of information in, into your agenda packet for this item. Uh, basically, the Yadkin PD Water Management Group was a group that operated under a memorandum of understanding back in twenty sixteen. The City of Albemarle has been a longstanding member of that group since its origination. Also, other reservoir operators and water providers in the region that pull out of the Yadkin PD River Chain. Uh, this group was mainly comprised to offer grant funding opportunities as well as just general organization of the Yadkin PD River Chain and also regionalization of the water supply. Uh, it's been their intent to, uh, incorporate as a nonprofit for the past two years. And they're finally making these steps to incorporate. Uh, by doing so, you know, we would be, again, another original member of that group if we decided to move into this, if you adopt the resolution tonight. Uh, and I'm more or less here to answer any questions that you might have about the incorporation of such.
Mr. Ferris?
I, I wondered about, when, when I saw this, I had a feeling, I wondered if, if there, if this wasn't some sort of scheme from some municipalities to get a foothold on Yadkin PD Water. Uh, because I noticed that three of them are Conaplish, Charlotte and Monroe, and they're not into the Yadkin PD Watershed. And then I noticed that the three people that are the three honchos on it, one of them is from Salisbury, one is from Raleigh, and one of them is from Monroe. And I, I just, I hate to wonder, what, what's going on here? Is somebody trying to, i- i- it sounds like a good thing, we're gonna be buddy buddies and we're gonna work together and all of this. And then what if that group decides they want to be the ones that allocate the water? Then where does that leave Albemarle? Cause we're sitting pretty right now. We're in a good position and I, I don't want us to, to be put in any kind of, of situation where we lose that pretty situation that we're in.
Fair, fair points and I, I appreciate your, uh, your comments on that. Um, you know, thi- this is a group that was, you know, we've been operating together since twenty sixteen. And, uh, this is more or less, these bylaws that are put together are more or less put in place to provide for decision-making within the group. I don't know as collectively the group has enough power to, uh, vote down any applications that we make to, uh, to FERC.
I'm talking about now, I, I agree with you. I agree with, but what's Charlotte doing in the Yadkin PD? They're in the Catalba River, uh, uh, group.
I, I can't claim to know exactly where all of their water comes from. I do know that, uh, most of these municipalities in this group are either reservoir operators on the chain or actually receive water, uh, through other regional sources from this chain. So when you, when you talk about Union County, I know that they had recently constructed that, that pipeline that originated through Norwood and has gone down, uh, two oh five to Union County. So they, they are in effect pulling water from the Yadkin PD Chain. And I can only assume that maybe Charlotte has a similar arrangement, but I, I can't stand here and confirm that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where they began. They have their own reservoir and then they're on the Catalba River. But I, I just, I just have a, an uneasy feeling.
Is there any change to our operating, to what we're doing now?
No, no, sir, there's not.
It's just making it nonprofit, if I understand it.
It, it is a nonprofit and basically right now is, is they have other municipalities that are currently controlling the finances of the group through membership dues. And they're wanting to get away from that. Cause currently, and this, this is in the memo provided, that Winston Salem is currently helping out with the finances of the group. They're wanting to get away from that, have their own personnel and staff that are managing the finances of the group, uh, as well as having a more, a more formal process to the decision-making that happens within the group. So there, there would be elected officers inside the group, a board of directors, and then actual staff that is paid through by the group.
Can you tell me roughly what we pay for that?
So the, the membership dues are, it's based on metered customers. So since we're less than twenty-five thousand and more than seventeen hundred, we're gonna be paying seventy-five hundred per year. We currently do pay membership dues to this group under our current arrangement, and I don't have that number on hand right now. But we are currently an active paying member of the group.
I do, um, sometimes it's not good to have history, only other times it is good to have history. And I guess it was before this Yadkin PD Water Management Group came up, there was a group that was, um, developed, when Alcoa was there, there before Hydro, before Hydro Cube or Cube got there, okay? I would ask, I, I'm, I know that we've been working with these folks now for eight years, sort of working with them. We, the city, not you, Jay, but we, the city have been. But before we enter into a, an agreement, sign it on the dotted line, I also have some concerns that I would love to get answered because I also am concerned with folks outside the basin being involved. So I would hold, I would ask that we hold off on it and see if there's some other folks that, I guess what I think I'd like to see that, which I didn't see in this whole packet, and this is not you, this is just what's been for us, who those members are. And if I did see it, or who the other folks are, not who the officers are, but who the other member governments are, and there was a lot to read, I did not see that, it, it may be there. So did some, if somebody saw that, can you show me? I know there are eighteen of them, but.
Trying to find it.
Yeah, trying to find them, that's what I was, I'm, I just.
It's on page five of one, one of those things. I noticed the City of Statesville's on there.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So I understand, if, if I may, I can understand folks that are on it. I can understand Albemarle and Yadkin and Davidson County and Davie County, um, Duke Energy. I can understand that because of all the, the right of way that they have. I can, uh, Wilkes-Barre, Winston-Salem. But I too am, am very concerned about those outline folks who may be stronger in money than we are. Um, because I just remember what the issues were with FERC years ago. And water is the greatest commodity that we have. And it just, I'm a little antsy in doing things, formalizing it right now. And I don't know what I need to make me not antsy, but I'm glad that I'm not the only one.
If council wishes to table it, we need to come up with a list of questions you have so Mr. Boles can put it together before our next meeting.
And I'll follow up saying that, and I may be mistaken again, okay? I think this is the first time that we've seen this, which is fine. Again, it's not on you, Jay, but we have it now and many of us did not see it till Friday. And I just, there's some concerns that I have that I would, uh, tabling that would put it to the next meeting. Um, I saw that a couple of, um, suggestions that something be done by June thirtieth. Um, I, I'm not sure that I will even feel better then, but if I can look at what my questions might be, I might can pass them back on.
Well, it sounds like the concern would be what control or authority would we lose by formalizing this from informal group into, to nonprofit? So they would be eligible for grants and those type things. So I don't know if that can be answered or not, but in what way are we bound by, um, decisions of the group? And what, you know, and I don't know what kind of questions you would ask there. But, you know, I think the gist of it comes down to, from what I'm hearing, what control would we lose, what authority would we lose? How would it affect our current operations going forward? What impact would it have, if in?
Sure. And, and I appreciate the concerns and questions. Uh, my, my plan was to put this before y'all tonight on June fifth. We're actually meeting with the Yadkin PD, uh, the, the management group on the eighth. And so if we have some questions that I can go ahead and bring up, that'd be great. And my plan was to bring this up and, and more or less formalize it on the nineteenth, if that's okay with.
That's great. Then if.
Council, I'll entertain a motion that we postpone this to the next meeting.
Some of.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, going around the table, council, I know several members have been contacted about the Walk of Fame program that we're putting together. Uh, that we were, there, I think there's a, some, a misconception that only living people were eligible for this program. That does not say that anywhere that I can see in the paperwork. And I didn't think that was any discussion that council had at any of our previous meetings. Uh, we've never said it would be a only living people, have, is that correct, council?
I, I have had someone ask me that and, as well. And I don't remember that, but I think, um, Madam Clerk Stone has been the one that, you know, kept up with what's going on with all this. And I think if, if we had mentioned it, it would be in there. I don't remember that being in there.
So unless council has, says otherwise, we're gonna continue to what it says. And that does not restrict, uh, any deceased member from what I see. Yep, okay, moving on around the table, Mr. Ferris.
Before you do that, go back to this sheet right here, the spreadsheet. Is, that was the spreadsheet, because we jumped so much tonight in the agenda, I want to make sure that I'm right. This is the spreadsheet, there's three different pages of budget amendments, Michael.
Okay.
Did that go, that was the backup information to all those on the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yep.
Or not?
That was the backup information to the budget. So required to list anything that would have changed between the time it was presented to now.
Okay, so this has to do with the budget, budget twenty-four, is that right?
Yes, the budget that's under consideration.
So, so I would then ask, would just ask fellow council members again, the budget that we were presented in May, we've already got three pages of budget corrections, okay? That, that are here. Um, is there a way to go ahead and fix that so that when the budget is presented on a motion to accept, whenever that is, that it, we won't have budget corrections, it will just be part of the budget itself?
They're not corrections because it's not been adopted, it's just changes as you go through this. There are things that still continue to move and could be aligned a little bit better. Um, so that is reflected in the budget that is in the agenda package.
And I guess the reason I use the terminology correction, that's what it says on here, that's the reason I use that. Okay.
Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
Nothing to add.
Mr. Townsend.
Ah, quick question, uh, Councilmember Whitley. Have, have I missed or have you already, have y'all allocated any funds from the catalyst grant?
We did, I was gonna give a report.
Okay, all right, good deal, all right. Okay, good deal. All right, and the only other thing I'll add is a few congratulations notes. Congratulations to our chief, Pierre Bruton, uh, being voted, uh, most respected with the recent class of leadership Stanley. Uh, congratulations on that. Then I'd like to send a congratulations to Albemarle High School Girls Track Team, won the state championship. And then last but not least, congratulations to all the, uh, twenty-twenty-three graduates in Stanley. And then, last but not least, congratulations to all the 2023 graduates in Stanley County.
Good. And also, I think we should congratulate our Parks and Recreation staff and our director. We had a record turnout at the food truck this week. I think they do a great job getting that together. Mr. Bramlett.
I want to say, I attended two Wampus Cats games. They're a lot of fun. There were people tailgating, which I can't remember seeing in Albemarle, it was just a great time. Other thing I want to congratulate, our police chief, I attended the dinner, I guess, chief, it was Law Enforcement Week, is that sort of, that sort of thing? And he surprised me. You know, I have a PhD in chemistry, and this guy gave a lecture including a part on entropy, and he did it beautifully. And I congratulate you, you did that very well.
Say further, Mr. Bramlett.
No, no.
Mr. Aldridge.
Just a couple of things, just to kind of echo what Dr. Bramlett said, you know, oftentimes we hear in Albemarle, there's nothing to do, nothing going on, man, I wish there was something to do. And I also have gone to the, to see the Wampus Cats in person, and it is, Dr. Bramlett, is a lot of fun, you know, just seeing the, seeing the excitement down there, a lot of people gathered around. I didn't know, I never, I didn't realize they were tailgating, but that's the next best thing to a college football town, right? But, you know, encourage, encourage your neighbors, your friends, go pick up a friend, take them down to the Wampus Cats game. These Food Truck Fridays are unbelievable. I went to the one on Friday night, I got there a little bit late, but it was unbelievable. There was a ton of people there, parking was crazy, but compliment, I'd like to compliment the city staff for handling all that and doing all they do on a, on an event basis. And last but not least, you know, I want to thank the members of the community who came out tonight, regardless of, you know, we, sometimes things go our way, sometimes things don't, but at the end of the day, we need more meetings like we had tonight. We need, we need, we need members of the community to come out, regardless of your position, regardless of your stance, we up here as elected officials don't know what the, necessarily what the wishes or what the views are of the general public. You know, I wish, honestly, I wish it didn't take such a severe, important topic to bring people out and get people more involved. So, I want to applaud the people who came out tonight, and that's all I got.
Ms. Hall.
Well, just echo Food Truck Friday, and you know, this has been going on now, this is our third year, third year with music, fourth year doing something out there, and it's continued to grow. But I guess for us to give accolades and accept accolades about what's going on out there, we've got to, we have got to up the ante on our part. This is, again, not staff, this is us making the decision to appropriate some money to do some work, whether it's painting what we've got and cleaning it up and adding more or whatever it is, we got to do that. The Wampus Cats, this, I was asked over, on opening night, I guess that would have been a week ago, I was asked what one word would describe that one first night of the games, okay? When there were 700 folks, as they calculated that night, some folks buying lanyards, buying season tickets, and other folks walking in. And I said, "Community." And there, and it was a sense of complete community there that night. And I too have been to several, I've not made all four of them, mainly because there were other things going on this week, Food Truck Friday to be one of them. But actually, I got to sing on Saturday night, the National Anthem, and we were using volunteers to do that, and they asked me to do it. One of the things that I'm showing this tonight, because this is, sense of community is not just the city of Albemarle, there was a Norwood, Norwood Business that made these and donated them to their, to the, to them. And if you see outside, those of you that are here, or get one of these, it's the Stanley Magazine that the SNAP does, the very first night they were doing this, the question, it was a question and answer with the Caddy Wampus, about what's a Caddy Wampus. So, if you get this, the Stanley Magazine, Stanley is impressed, did that as part of it. So, when you say community, it is community at its greatest right now, not just Albemarle, but everybody. I have not asked this again, but I, and I have not been out, does anybody know if the Baden Road, where the fire happened, has it been cleaned up yet? I know they were still looking at how much it was going to cost. Mr. Ferris, do you know if it's been cleaned?
I haven't been advised by planning that it has been removed.
Okay. And I would add a boy to, last Tuesday night, the town of Norwood did the Stanley County Council of Government. Chris Bramlett and Chris Whitley and I were there for the city of Albemarle. They did a phenomenal program and had five of their, five of their businesses talk about what they do and what service they provide within the town of Norwood. So, that was, that was a great meeting. Just a reminder that this organization meets on the 5th Tuesday nights each quarter, and I believe the next one might be even in July, it might be early, so I'm not sure about that, but we need to support that. And an add a boy to, or add a girl to the West Stanley girls softball team, as they came and did, they did, won their state championship this weekend as well.
Four times in a row.
That's right, that's exactly right. And I've already asked about the matching grant for the city, from the county with our, with us not getting it for the parks, but, and you all have, or someone has talked about that, I don't know to the extent, but would like to know, because we were not mentioned that we got ours. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Whitley.
I do hate to single out any department, but Parks and Rec in the past few weeks has must have been really running hard. Thursday night, Wampus Cat games last week, Thursday nights at Depot, and then out at City Lake Park. We left a little before the end of it, there were a number of other people leaving. They were, cars were parked almost all the way to Highway 73, all the way back down the entrance and exit road. So, I mean, that's the most people I've ever seen out there. I wanted to give just a quick report on the Catalyst Grant Program. We did meet, we had eight applications this week, or this year. Not going to say anything about who was awarded or what, because I want to, we've not been notified yet, or they, I'm not sure they've been notified yet. I did want to just say that we did have eight applications, and I wanted to thank the committee that worked on this. I'm chairing the committee, Tammy Branch served on there, she's our downtown business owner. Jean Starnes, who is our downtown property owner. Tom Nutley with Small Business Center. Pam Poplin, who's representing Albemarle Downtown Development. Lindsey Allman, who's our EDC Director. And Sandy Sylvie Mullis from Chamber of Commerce. That's the committee. Also, Darren Rhodes and Joy Allman, them along with Lindsey Allman did all the work. We just got together and met. So, they basically did all the grunt work, getting the applications in, answering questions, and are still working to wrap it up. The, we'll announce who, what the awards are later, when we make sure that they've been notified. The, a couple of changes, I want to let counsel know, we made a couple of changes to the procedures. We had in there that checks would be given, presented, whatever, within 14 days of the committee meeting. Well, that didn't happen last year, and it's not going to happen this year. So, we went ahead and changed that to give the committee and finance a little more flexibility in doing that, especially right here, end of the year, beginning of the next year. So, the committee has the authority based on the bylaws to make small changes, but we did bring one back to counsel last year, to get you to vote on it, because it was fairly, fairly sizable. The other change is, one of the criteria there, if you look through the guidelines, it gives some specific criteria that we can consider in awarding the grants. We also added one in, or two, changes that affect handicap accessibility. There was nothing in there regarding that, so we realized that could be something that, you know, I think Joy Allman mentioned, sometimes that affects some of the work they do, Lady DDC. In other words, it looked like it was something that was omitted from the guidelines, so we added that in also. If there's any major changes to the program, we would certainly bring them back, but some of the small changes like that, we would just make them within the committee. And anybody have any questions? All right, that's it.
Mr. Dry.
I'm going to tag on to Dexter's with the girls' track team at Albemarle High School. I don't know if it's still showing up online or not. If you haven't seen it, you ought to go see it, it's the most phenomenal four-by-four-hundred relay I have ever witnessed, either boys or girls. From the get-go, we were almost a half a lap in front of the second-place team. It's phenomenal to see not only records broken, but crushed. They, it, I watched it four times. I ran track in high school, I ran track in college, and I have not ever seen anything as dominant as what's occurring at Albemarle High School, not only in that relay, but other relays as well. They absolutely crushed it. And for what's been going on at Albemarle High School, that's something for us as a city to be proud of, and if you see the track coach or any of these young ladies, I would just say, take a hat off and pat them on the back and say, what a heck of a job y'all did representing Albemarle High School. Also, I think we have the Hall of Fame coming up, and not the too-distant future, and we do have Albemarle High School graduate TA McLendon, who's nominated to go in this year, and we're very proud of TA's accomplishments at Albemarle, North Carolina State, and I hope we can all attend and everybody in the community to give their support. Thank you.
So, we've mentioned Albemarle High School, I know West Stanley High School was mentioned, a retired police captain from Albemarle Sun, who was a South Stanley, was he mentioned?
I think we mentioned that last month, but do it again, do it again.
Congratulations to him for a state, state championship in track.
Jesse Sun?
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, it's exactly right. You might want to ask about Hall of Fame, you may want to ask that tonight, go around, because it's the 17th of July, and tickets are now open.
Tickets are on sale.
Yeah.
Charles Brown, McJewell. Who's going to attend?
July 17th.
Bramlett, Townsend?
Myself, Dry, Hall, anybody else?
David Hunt, 17th of July.
I will let you know.
And my son is going to be a part.
So, it's Dry, Hall, me, Bramlett, Townsend, you'll be getting tickets.
We're getting tickets, counsel.
We usually do. Mr. Ferris.
Your honor, should we, with the, with the Albemarle Track Team winning the state championship, should we do something for them, like a recognition?
And that's what counsel wishes to do?
I think we should.
I'd like to see that.
I'd love to see that.
We normally do.
And somebody, who's going to take the initiative to get us the information together so we can put together a resolution?
I would.
Mr. Townsend, get that together and get it to Mr. Ferris.
These kids, you know, they're getting out of school this, this week.
Can we get them here, yeah?
It's difficult, you know, some of them might even be going to college, so.
We've got an Olympic flag on that, that thing.
Yeah. Mr. Townsend, if you get that together, then maybe, maybe we can, if you can get it together, maybe we can do it in July.
I have, yeah, that'd be good.
Counsel, I'll remind you, in your agenda tonight, you have all the budget information. Please keep that budget information so we don't have to destroy any more trees for the next meeting. We're, we're doing a lot of paper right now, so we've got our new system running, so please keep that, and I'm going to ask staff not to print that and give it to us next time. We will have it, or we have it. I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3 and 6, for personnel and to consult with the city attorney.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Did we go back into regular session? Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Coming out of closed session, we met to discuss, consult with attorney and personnel, and I have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until June 19th at 6:30 our regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hunt, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.